Leave that part out.
And Sharon's not here today, right?
Right, that's right. Sharon won't be with us tonight.
Okay.
So we're ready, we're ready to go whenever you want to start, Don.
Okay. Call this meeting under Timerville Town Council order, May 13, 2021. AC, please, go over to conduct meeting electronically, information. Popped up for a second.
Yeah, let me get it on the right one here.
Okay.
All right. And Quentin will have to talk about this, and I think you might have referenced that in an email you sent. I believe our orders.
Your, your volume went away, AC.
All right, so I guess we'll have, I believe our orders go up through the end of May, May 26. That is almost a year ago that we, the council put the, the declaration of local emergency, the resolution and the emergency ordinance, which allows us to conduct meetings electronically and which went for six months and it was renewed then on November 12th for six, additional six months from the original deadline. Members of town council and town staff are participating on the Zoom platform. Meetings being streamed on YouTube as always, and all the required notifications were sent. There are going to be two public hearings tonight, and both of which have been properly advertised. Comments, we asked for comments on either of those public hearings to be sent in beforehand, but we will have a phone line available during the hearings. We'll throw that phone number up when we start those public hearings if anyone wants to call in. And any, any votes tonight will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Okay, let's begin then, as we always do. First thing we'll go over is approval of the minutes. We have the April 8th town council meeting, and we have the minutes for the special budget meeting on April 13th. We can approve them all at one time. Anyone had, I hope everyone's had a chance to review them there in your packet. If there are any questions or amendments or changes to those minutes. Seeing none, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Carl. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Clarence. Okay, roll call. Carl?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Okay, Natalie?
Yes.
And Ned?
Yes.
You all? Okay, you have a, everyone was invited a treasures report along with the different spreadsheets, the park spreadsheet and the sports complex spreadsheet. Does anyone have any questions on those for Melinda? Any questions? Okay, then we'll move down to payment of the bills. Everybody received their list of bills for payment. Any questions on any line items for the bills? Okay, then I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the bills for payment.
Thank you, Natalie. Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
Carl, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Carl?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And Ned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, what else do I have here? Just a real quick note on the sports complex. If you, if you look at the items that we've spent, we're covered, it looks like we're coming out a fair amount under budget so far, so that's always a good thing. So doing it within the budget we've given should be an easy task, but just let you know that the, the folks working on it are, so far what they've done are coming out about half of the budget. So that's, that's very good. Half of where we had scheduled, we had, we had estimated about thirty some odd thousand for the work they have done so far, and they spent about seventeen thousand. That's always good. So we're really doing a good job. Maybe I'll do some even more upgrades there once we get through this part. And if you haven't seen it yet, they're, the interior is almost done except for partitions. The lights were installed this week. The signs were on order, and I think AC, are you talking ordering the goalpost to gold, whatever they're called?
Right, the baseball goals. Yeah, so it had come up some options and we reviewed them and gave her our preference on that.
Yep, and the gravel is being installed now, so hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll have a finished sports complex. Let's see what else we got. So bills for payment. Rails to Trails Resolution. AC, do you want to go over that?
Yeah, everybody received a copy of it, so I won't read through it unless somebody wants me to read through it. But basically, it is another resolution to show support for the Rails to Trails project. It doesn't commit the town to any kind of funding or anything like that. It truly is a support for the group that's trying to get that rail changed into multi-use trail, which would be quite a, quite a boon for the whole area. It has picked up the group that originally started the Rail to Trail project. I think it's moving a little bit quicker than what they anticipated, and they've got some of the higher level elected officials on board who have some very good support for it. So this would just be a way for, to show town of Timerville being in support of that proposed project.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the resolution that AC's offered the council to approve?
Mr. Mayor? Just to interject. Oh, sorry, Ned, you go ahead. Go ahead, Quinn. I was just going to interject quickly and say, I do think that if you pass this resolution, you'd allow, be allowing them to use like your logo and name and everything in any of the materials where they're showing their support. They're going to say all the towns and localities and everything, they're in support of it. So just be aware of that, that your name will be used for some marketing, I imagine.
Good point, good point, Quinn. Thank you. Ned, you had a question?
No, I wanted to make a motion that we approved the resolution as printed.
Okay, thank you. Ned, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Clarence, any further discussion? Then we'll roll call Carl.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And Ned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Like it's on Rails to Trails. We have about a minute before we can do the public hearing, correct, AC?
Right, before you hit, before you open it up for public comment, we can go ahead and start. What I'll do is I'll go ahead and throw, let me, let me try something while we're waiting here and see if this actually works or not. I don't know if it'll show up on the YouTube. Does everybody see if I have a number on their screen now?
I do not.
You do not, okay.
I do.
You do, Quentin?
I do.
It was, it was just something I tried a couple of minutes ago and didn't know if it would, um. It shows up on the YouTube feed or did for a second, so it must not be there very long. So anyway, I will put, I'll go ahead and put the.
I know you put it on like a.
Yeah, I, I had it set up for that. I just thought if we could put it on while everybody was talking, it would actually be
Right.
A little bit better, but.
Seems like some can see it, just to make sure everybody can see it.
Right.
Okay, AC, do you want to go over the budget or you want me to do that part?
You go ahead, you can, you can do it, that's fine. You're well versed in it as I am, so.
Okay, well, we're here tonight is we're at a public hearing, the fiscal year 2021, 22 proposed budget. The budget right now is currently $2,539,993.86. Within that budget, we're showing loan proceeds about $303,753. That's basically what's going on is we're having capital improvements this year, and we decided to finance those to our current loan, our current loan right now. Melinda, what is the current balance on our loan? It's six hundred and some odd thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact amount.
The current amount is $641,170.18.
Thank you. Yeah, currently, the town had a $641,000 on the balance on the loan, which basically meant within six years, the town would be debt-free. So we do a very good job at our finances for our town to be that close to being debt-free. So we decided to do is roll the 303,000 into the current loan, extend our loan payment nine more years, which basically gives us the exact same payment that are within a hundred dollars of the payment we had, currently have. Within that capital improvements, we are investing in our police department. We're going to renovate the much-needed renovation to our police department along with evidence, cages and evidence, evidence storage. We're investing in car cameras, upgraded car cameras, sort of police officers along with body cameras. We know how important those are in today's day and age. Also upgrading the tasers, which need to be changed into new models, and investing in Lexi pole, which allow officers to keep track of all the new laws and things like that. Also within that is we have a, a building that is blighted. We have to carry that amount to remedy that situation. We also have a portion of a sidewalk renovation at Macaulay Drive. That will be crosswalks, crosswalk light and sidewalks along Macaulay Drive. That's a grant we're receiving from the state. And I think we're paying 20%. Is that correct, AC?
That's right.
And that's roughly seventy some odd thousand dollars along with some paving on Virginia Avenue West. Did I get that address correct?
Yes.
Okay, and a brush, a brush cutter for the, for the work crew. So along with that, along with this capital improvements, we're making a dollar fifty a month increase in the trash collection. The, what we're charged to pick up trash and what we're being charged tipping at the landfill has went up slightly. So it's a dollar fifty per month, and we're also proposing a 3% increase in water and sewer, which I think works out for the basic consumer a ninety-six cents a month. Anything else, AC? I think I covered a lot of it.
I think you hit everything that's significant.
Okay, you also see some transfer from savings. That transfer from savings is basically the way these work. It's, we have to cover depreciation, so it just shows the balance, the budget. It actually isn't a draw from savings. So council, anyone else have anything else to add? I like to thank, I like to thank AC and the, and the front office for doing a great job. Chris and his crew for all they've done and Chief also with, with the police department always does. And the council for several long meetings we had. I think we've worked out a pretty reasonable budget. We're always pretty conservative with what we do, and I think that's all I got to say, AC.
Okay. So I will go ahead and throw that in number for the the phone number back up on the screen, and that way if you can go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Okay, I'll now open up for public.
Carl's, Carl's got a question first.
I have a question. During the last budget meeting, Chris informed us that we possibly be looking at some pretty costly infrastructure repairs down the road. And on this budget we're working on now, I would like to see the water and sewer connection fees increase in preparation for all these repairs down the road. I mean, that way it wouldn't tax the actual residents.
Okay.
I'd like to see that in the budget, just what's everyone else think about it? And have to decide on the amount.
Right. I, I mean, what's council, what's the council feel on that? Any, any comment?
Can it be added to the budget at this time?
We haven't passed it yet.
I'm assuming during the public hearing, you can adjust the budget if need be, correct, AC?
I believe, I believe that's how it's been done in the past. Quentin, I don't know if you have any input on this or not.
Off the top of my head, I would say, yeah, you should be able to amend it because it's a proposed budget that you're presenting, and that's what was published.
Right, exactly.
What are we current, currently charging for hookup fees, AC?
It's four thousand for water, four thousand for sewer in town. So four thousand for each and then forty-five hundred for each out of town.
Okay. What's the council, what's the rest of the council? Well, how do they feel?
What's the proposed hike?
I, I think Carl will see if anyone would be inclined to hike the connection fees, and then we discuss the proposed hike. If someone has an idea.
What was the significant amount that Chris stated that we would need to, to fund these repairs?
Believe he was insinuating millions.
Should we look for a more sustainable option then than connection fees? Because we never know how many we're going to get, and it's kind of a finite resource.
Right.
I'd almost rather raise the monthly rate than the connection fee. And will that hinder further development causing less connections?
Good.
Well, my concern with that is then you've got our residents paying for this versus like the, the new connections, which should be paying for that. So do we, I don't know if the word is punish or not, but all of the town residents on a monthly basis because, or yearly basis because of this? I don't know, that's just my.
I mean, but every resident would be using the infrastructure upgrades. So technically, the entire tax base should be paying for it, not just new residents.
Well, we're raising water and sewer rates and, you know, with the water and sewer connection fees, we wouldn't be putting a burden on the residents. It would just be new building in town.
Would that include new houses?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Does that include new housing?
Yes, houses, businesses.
But we're raising it thirty dollars a year currently, right, per household? Roughly.
Roughly. Well, it's, if it's on the basic person, it's only going up. You can't count the trash, but water and sewer, you're raising it two dollars every two months. You're racy raising it twelve dollars a year. For the basic, like myself, I use just the minimum and people like that.
Yeah, so.
Would connect, raising the connection speed be enough potentially to cover the cost of the infrastructure upgrades?
No, I don't think it would be near enough, but it would be a start. I like to call the account our savings slash infrastructure repair account.
Yeah, you could, you can, if you wanted, if you, if you had to take care of millions of dollars, you'd have to refinance like we did when we did it ten years ago and did the water tower and so forth, where you could spread it over a period of ten years. And that's.
But you know, if something came up that was going to cost fifty, seventy-five, a hundred thousand, you know, we have our account going, we'll have to borrow the money then.
Right, right.
AC, I think there was a document that you presented that had a comparison of what our hookup fees were with the localities around us. How do we compare? Do you remember?
Oh, goodness. In Rockingham County, we're fairly, we're kind of right, right on track. The thing is, when you get out of, but then when you get out of Rockingham, especially if you head north up 81, they get really hot there. The thing that we have going for us is that we're just a customer of Broadway. Yeah, for the, for, on the, on the sewer side, anyway, we're just a customer. So, you know, our costs are kind of locked in place to a certain extent on the wastewater treatment side. And so you'll see some of the localities that had to implement really high connection rates because they were going to have to build new sewer treatment plants, and they were looking at eighteen to twenty-five million dollar projects that they were working on. And so that's why their connection fees, it was it was one of the localities in Shenandoah County up closer to 66, I believe. I remember from the Strasburg, Front Royal, some of those areas. But their connection fees got really hefty, at least especially on the sewer side, where they were up to like seventeen thousand dollars for connection fees. But they were, they knew that they were with the regulations that were coming down as far as water quality in a treatment facility, that they were going to have to upgrade their plants. And so that's why they, they, they really had no choice because they had to, they, they were in the situation where we are, where we could connect the one to and just be act as a customer to somebody else to treat it. So it, it, yeah, for Rockingham County, kind of answered, but for Rockingham County, we're kind of, kind of right on base with everybody else. But you also have to look at everybody's situation once you get outside of the county too.
I think the last chart I saw on that, we were oh, maybe somewhere mid-range to three-quarter range on the fee cost in the county.
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not.
You know, I'm not, I'm not asking for a five thousand dollar increase on, on either one. You know, I'd, I'd say a minimal, maybe five hundred bucks on each, you know, thousand air connection, hell.
And here's something to throw out, Carl. If this kind of seems like we're throwing it in last minute almost on the developments that are already proposed. So I might suggest if you do decide to increase it, maybe not make it effective July 1st, but maybe make it effective midway through the year to give them an opportunity. Because we don't know when these developments are actually going to start, you know, construction. So if you give them a grace period of where maybe they would have the opportunity to pay some in advance, we've always done that in the past where before the new rates become effective, developers could come in and pay in advance at the current rate, and they would buy, they would buy connections for however, however many they wanted to purchase.
You talking allowing mid-yearly or mid-budget?
Well. Mid, mid fiscal year. So if you went up through like December, like if the rates are, if the rates went into effect January 1, instead of Ju- July 1, go into effect January 1. I don't, like I said, the developments, you know, they're in the planning phases, so they don't, I don't know when they're going to start or anything. I just feel kind of like it's almost thrown on at the last minute. You know, oh, we've got developments, let's raise everything up now. And I know that's, I know that's not the intent, and I know what your intent is, Carl, was to, to make sure that we have those funds available in the future for the major upgrades and repairs that we need.
I don't really think that, you know, a thousand dollars is going to stop anyone that wants to really build here in town. You know, I can't see it. They're just going to pass it on.
Right. Yeah, I don't, it's just the, the building market right now, I mean, the housing market is, you know, it's very easy to sell a house right now. It's much harder to buy a house if you sell yours because you're more or less doing a lateral move because the price of houses is so high right now. And that all goes back to the cost of materials. You've, you've probably been to the hardware store and seen the prices of two-by-fours over the last year. Went from two fifty-seven a board to seven, seven something a board now. And so that, that's part, that's a part of it is it's, it's very hard to.
We don't go anywhere, can't find gas.
The statistic for the radio the other day, there's an extra thirty-six thousand dollars to build a new house just on the cost of materials increase. So then you're looking at thirty-seven thousand dollars extra than what you were normally anticipating per unit that you would need to build.
Well, let's, let's, we can set, I, we probably should discuss this more in our, in our budget meetings. The easiest way to do this, Carl, is you make a motion, what you think it should be, and if it passes, it passes it. If it doesn't, it doesn't, we move on.
Okay, I proposed we increase the water and sewer connection fees a minimum of five hundred dollars each on this new 22 budget.
It would be, it had to be a specific five hundred dollars each, your budget, your motion.
Five hundred each.
Okay. If we have a second, then we'll have a vote. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, let's see if, if it passes. Carl?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Natalie?
No.
Ned?
No.
Okay, it's three to two, so it does pass. So the connections, the in-house connections are in town will be forty-five, forty-five, and out will be five thousand and five thousand, AC.
Okay, so we'll that, we'll add, we'll make that change to the budget with the connection fee revenues. Based on the number of connections, we thought we'll have them set at those rates then, so we'll.
It'll lower, it'll lower the savings transfer, whatever.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you, Carl. And we can have, I, I think, I know, there's a time we're going to have to have a much longer discussion about that sort of things of how we are going to pay for the much-needed infrastructure improvements that will step coming up. But that'll be a much longer meeting than just our council meeting. Okay, let's open it up to the public, AC.
All righty.
I do have one comment before you open it up to the public. AC had mentioned something about not having it be effective July 1st, so that motion passed so that those rates will go up effective the new, as part of the new budget, July 1, correct?
That is correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, AC, do we have anybody calling with questions?
All right, so here's the phone number if anybody, if anybody has public comment. They are more than welcome to call that number, so say it's on the phones and.
And we have to do two public comments, one on this and one on the amended budget?
We will, we'll do them separate.
Okay.
Because, and, and the reason for that, Don, is because the council can't vote on the proposed budget tonight.
Okay.
We have to wait for that. On the budget amendment, the council, once we have the public hearing on that tonight, then the council can go ahead and vote right away on that.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions sitting in writing, AC?
I, I didn't receive anything by regular mail or by email, and I had no phone calls prior to the meeting.
Okay, let's give it a minute and see what, see if anyone called in. I think it's been long enough, AC.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at YouTube stream on my phone, and the number's been up there. So say you haven't received any, I haven't heard the phone ring. You haven't received any calls, have you, Cecilia?
Yeah, I haven't received any calls yet.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close public comment on that item. And again, like you said, AC, we do not vote on that this time, we'll vote on it next council meeting.
That's right.
Okay, so now we move to the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget amendment. Basically, what this is, is if we have over one percent in expenditures, we have to amend our budget. At, per, I guess it's state guidelines, I guess it is, AC, is that correct?
Code of Virginia dictates that.
Code of Virginia. So we received a hundred thirty-nine thousand, oh sixty-four and thirty-five cents from the CARES funding last year, which went to small business grants, fire department grants, upgraded its town sign, enhanced employee pay and other small projects. And we also received a seventy-five thousand dollar donation from pilgrims, which we're very grateful for, and that's paying for the sports complex. And we also had a waterline project that because of all the things going up with construction, the piping went up, I guess, close to thirty thousand dollars more than originally budget a year or so ago, or a couple of years ago, along with rock claws and so forth. So we're amended by one thirty-nine, oh sixty-four, seventy-five thousand donation and fifty-one thousand for the, what, the slow waterline project that we completed last year. All of this has been paid, except for we're still working on the pilgrims pride portion, but that's all in our savings and being used for that. Any questions on what the budget amendment entails? So we open up for public comment, AC?
That's correct. Same, uh, same routine as last time, the numbers on the screen.
Setting my timer.
All righty.
Set for a minute and see if we get a call.
Okay.
And I, while, while we're waiting, AC, I'm assuming, what, what we found out, I don't know if AC passed it on to everyone, we asked about with these funds, when do you have to amend the budget? When you receive them, you don't have to amend the budget, but as, when you spend them, you do have to amend the budget. So your revenue can be more than expected, but your expenditures cannot, basically. So if there is more relief fund, which is, we're told is on the way, we'll have to amend it when we, when we start expending that cash or that funds or whatever.
Yeah, on that, we will basically kind of go through a, a mini budget cycle. Once we receive the, the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds and whatever council have to talk about it, come up with the list of projects to, to spend those funds on.
Okay, it's been admitted, AC.
Okay, no calls, Cecilia?
No, no calls.
Okay, thank you.
Close public comment. So on this one, AC, this is the one we do need a, a motion to approve, correct?
Right, you, the council does have the authority to approve that tonight.
Okay. I need a motion, the council so chooses to approve this tonight.
I'll make that motion that we approve the amended budget.
Thank you, Ned. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clarence. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Carl?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And Ned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we're down, public hearing, public hearing, we're down to the police report. Chief Guy, think for us tonight?
Uh, yeah, but I actually have a little bit today, kind of hard to break the mood of talking about all that budget stuff and money, but, but, um, this is Police Memorial Week. Every year, it's the week where May fifteenth falls, so that happens to be this week. And we, uh, the, the Timberville Police Department is very lucky to be part of a community, including employees. They, they give us a lot of support, we all support each other. And so the front office did a lot to kind of garner some, some recognition for the police department. There were quite a few businesses who donated some, some things to officers for recognition this week. We got some stuff from the elementary school and so on and so forth. So first thing is just to say that Police Memorial Week is, is centers around the officers who've been killed in the line of duty, but it's also a time to kind of be thankful for all the rest of the officers that we have, and, and I'm very proud to have the officers that have worked for me. I'm very proud of the fellow employees in Timberville and all the community members, all the business partners that we have and the citizens that live in town. So I just want to say thank you, thank you for all that. The other thing is, uh, I have a video that Cecilia put together for me that I believe is about six minutes long. So it's, uh, that'll make up for the last couple of months when I didn't have anything. We started, as a department, we started an award accommodation program. Generally, kind of my outlook, the way I grew up, but, uh, we weren't much on accolades in our house, you just did your best all the time, that's what was always expected. And that kind of always run my police departments the same way in Bridgewater, it was like that and, and here. But I'll tell you, you know, in the last six years, especially the last couple of years, we've had some things that occurred that were so remarkable that it was very difficult to, to look at those situations and look at what the officers were faced with and what their response was and think that, uh, they didn't deserve something more than a paycheck and a thank you from me. So, uh, it kind of pushed me to look for something else. So I did start an award accommodation program. I'm already off of another local agency, narrowed it down to a handful of awards. And then I worked with front office, Cecilia and Michelle in the front office helped design the certificates and work with Liberty Emblem to design the medals and that, that took a lot of work and put all that together over about a year, a little more, and then of course COVID slowed things down. But we, uh, there are four officers who did receive award accommodations. They were presented with that over the last week or so. I did those individually, Cecilia videoed that so we wouldn't have tried to get everybody in the room together at one time. So we'll play that video for you in just a minute. Like I said, it's about six-minute video. And then Cecilia will follow up over the next week or so with, uh, some pictures that she took of the actual awards, what the medals look like and the certificates. So if you guys keep an eye on Facebook, you'd be able to see what the actual commendations look like. You'll see, uh, commendations given to four different officers, Officer Shulten and Officer Ray are full-time employees and everybody on the council and in the town should be pretty familiar with them. There'd be another officer, Officer Nugent, who's a part-time officer, who's worked with us for quite a few years. He is full-time with another agency, he also, uh, received the commendation. And then Officer Paniagua, who worked for us part-time for a couple of years, he has recently given up his part-time spot because he does not have time to, uh, work for us, but he is a full-time employee of another law enforcement agency close by. So there may be a couple of officers that you don't recognize and, and they are part-time officers. So, uh, Austin, if you could play the YouTube video, then I'll follow up after that.
All right, we'll try this and see if the, the sound is good enough.
Don't you think the sound's going to work, AC?
Maybe just have to send everybody to YouTube after the meeting's over.
Maybe. No, I'm not getting any sound?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I've got all the, all my settings are all the way up, so. We'll put that, we'll put that link out there on Facebook and, um.
Just email it to the council after it's over and, and put it on our YouTube page, if that's what we need to do, that's okay.
All right, Chief, take it, take the opportunity to go over what, what was given to the folks. Um, and we can see the details when you send out the video.
Okay, uh, so Officer Paniagua, uh, chronologically, Officer Paniagua's incident was the, the first one. And, uh, I'll read what the award presentation said, actually have that in front of me. In the early morning hours of May seventh, twenty eighteen, Officer Carmen Paniagua was dispatched to co-op drive for an unknown situation. The emergency communication center also advised that while on the phone with the original caller, they heard what was believed to be a gunshot in the background. Communications then advised there was a subject with a gunshot injury at Walmart. Officer Paniagua then responded to that location with Rockham County Deputy. After receiving a report of further gunshots, Officer Paniagua then left Walmart, responded to the Bellevue Street address with another deputy where they confronted an armed subject. After shots were fired, the suspect was taken into custody and medical aid was rendered. For his actions on this day, Officer Paniagua is hereby awarded the Timberville Police Department Medal of Valor. So, uh, in, in hierarchy, the Medal of Valor is the, the second medal. Officer Steve Shulten, on June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, Officer Steve Shulten was dispatched to an address on Lone Pine Drive for disorderly conduct call involving an intoxicated male threatening people with a sword and having access to firearms. Upon arrival, a witness advised him that the subject was still inside the apartment with a male subject who he was holding against his will. Upon approaching the house door, Officer Shulten could hear arguing and decided he needed to make entry to ensure the safety of the second person. The door would not open, and so after notifying the emergency communications center, he kicked the door in and made entry to the residence, allowing the second person to get away from the suspect and leave the apartment. During the ensuing altercation with the suspect, Officer Shulten received serious injuries, yet remained calm, relaying information through the radio and directing the actions of the other first responders as they arrived on scene. Therefore, based on his resolute decision-making, decisive action, encouraging the face of grave danger to himself, Officer Steve Shulten is hereby awarded the Timberville Police Department Medal of Honor, which is our highest award. Also, due to the injuries sustained during this incident, Officer Shulten is hereby awarded the Timberville Police Department Purple Heart. Officer Nugent, on July seventh, twenty nineteen, at approximately twenty-one fifteen hours, Officer Jeremiah Nugent was requested to respond under mutual aid with the Rockham County Sheriff's Deputy. They were dispatched to an address on Mechanicsville Road for an escalating situation involving a reportedly intoxicated subject with a firearm. The emergency communication center continued to relay information, reporting that the subject's family was barricaded in the house and then reporting that the subject was shooting into the house. Soon after the officer's arrival, the situation escalated quickly. In only a few brief seconds and under low light conditions, Officer Nugent acted decisively to protect another person's life. He and other law enforcement officers then immediately rendered medical aid. From the time Officer Nugent was dispatched to this call, he demonstrated poise and leadership for his courageous and decisive action on the night of July seventh, twenty nineteen. Officer Jeremiah Nugent is hereby awarded the Timberville Police Department Medal of Valor. Lastly, Officer CK Ray. In the early morning hours of November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, Timberville Officer CK Ray and Broadway Officer Patrick Tate were coordinating proactive criminal interdiction work. Officer Tate made a traffic stop on Brethren Road with Officer Ray following close behind. As Officer Ray approached the scene, he heard Officer Tate's radio traffic that he had been shot. Almost immediately, Officer Ray was in visual contact and observed the suspect vehicle leaving the scene. He slowed down and looked towards Officer Tate, who waved him on. Officer Ray continued to pursue the suspect until the suspect eventually gave up his flight on Route eleven. After the vehicle drifted off the roadway, Officer Ray and the assisting county deputy carefully cleared and secured the car, holding the scene until further units arrived to assist. During the entirety of this incident, Officer CK Ray remained calm and made resolute decisions for his bravery in pursuing a suspect who had just shot another officer and his exceptional calm and control during the incident. Officer CK Ray is hereby awarded the Timberville Department Medal of Valor. So that's, uh, that's a long time coming, the Carmen's incident was quite a while ago, and it's one of these things that, uh, I'm sorry it took that long, but we seem to be living in unusual times, and we have great officers who are, uh, capable of dealing with these things.
Awesome, thank you, Chief. Well done, well done. Like you mentioned, uh, I'm sure I can speak for the whole council, we're all proud of what your officers did, we're all proud of what all our staff does. Again, these situations are terrible, no one doesn't deny, no one denies that, but, um, for your officers to get home safe, to be with their families is a good thing, so. It goes, it, it shows to your, the training you put them through and the standards that you uphold our officers to, so good job to everybody. So thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate it. The, uh, last, I'd like to say, your last two things is, uh, the Timberville Police Department, Broadway Police Department, it's mentioned in one of the award letters, have a great working relationship, it was, it was great under Chief Collins and it continues to grow, uh, under Chief Miller. So it's not, not uncommon to see the two departments together on calls in both the towns. And I, and I believe we're providing better service to both communities as that continues, that, that working relationship continues to grow and improve. And, uh, lastly, I would just ask, uh, that everybody remember that the world is a changing place and we, we have had an unfortunate spate of violence over the last several years, and we did lose a law enforcement officer this year close by. Officer Wenton over in Stanley, which is only fifteen miles from us, so. Just keep, keep him and his family in your minds when you think about how the world's changing around us.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Any, any of the, how the council have any comments? Okay, well, thank you, Chiefs, stay safe.
Thank you.
Um, AC, do we have anything else? We're down to adjournment.
I did have, um, we had one person who tried to get through, um, on, with a comment on the, um, public hearing. And it was on the, I believe it was on the one for the proposed budget. Sarah Berry, I think she posted, I think she had made a comment on the, on the YouTube feed, but she said she was going to ask why raising taxes isn't being discussed if there's a very real concern about multi-million dollar infrastructure projects on the horizon.
Well, I, I would say we did discuss raising taxes and had some fairly good debates about it, but as of right now, the council hadn't decided to go that route yet, but I think down the road, we're going to have to make those tough decisions to raise taxes to pay for these upcoming projects. Council agree? Okay, yeah, we're going to have.
I just want to make sure I got her comment out there, so she tried to, tried to get, uh, get it through there, so.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Um, you know, we've done a very good job with the funds we have. We've come a long way in the time you've been with the council, AC, and the group we have now. Um, and we've got a lot, we used to be reactive and now we're proactive and now we're fixing things that we know are coming up, which is a great place to be. But that doesn't mean we won't get to projects, we talked about future water sources, water tanks, things like that, that you have to pay for them somehow and just connection fees, like Natalie discussed, that's, that's a finite resource. So at some point, you may have to, we're going to have to have a tough conversation where, where where the increased funds come from. So we did have that conversation, Sarah, thank you for the question. Um, and we'll continue to have those discussions over the next few years for sure. Anything else, AC?
That's all that I have for right now. Um, there was the personnel matter that I'd sent out to the council and I don't know what council's pleasure is on that, if you want to go into closed session to, to.
I think.
Discussion on that.
I think what we got back from our attorney is he recommended that we wait a few days before going into discussion on that. Does council agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I think it's a general, I see a bunch of head nodding, so we'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll just have to have a special meeting at some point, AC, within a few days. Once we, we try to figure out where we're at. Um, well, thank you, council. AC, you always make the budget easier than it, than it has in the past, um, but there's a lot of, a lot of talk and a lot of thinking and, um, a lot of planning, so thank the entire staff for all they do and the council for all you've done, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, guys and gals.